Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community, and also a prayer for the citizens of London. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gunn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here. I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 159, 2017.
Second. Under question. This resolution pertains to the request for outdoor seating at Tosh Restaurant, and will be placed in seventh order for a final vote. Anyone who wishes to speak on this piece of legislation may do so during fourth order of citizens' participation. All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved. Dispense with reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report, 2016-2017, year to date May 31, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, file.
3B, Agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting to be held June 14, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, file.
3C, Tax Assessors Report for Hearing Date to be held June 21, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, file.
3D, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Lequana County Land Bank, held May 12, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received, file. Do any council members have announcements at this time? The electronic recycling program will begin on Monday, June 12, and extend through June 26. Your items should be placed curbside for the DPW to collect. Each household will be allowed one television and one computer monitor. Please be aware that pickup of these items may occur at any time, not necessarily on your scheduled garbage day. Please be prepared to have your items ready and place curbside for this Monday, June 12. Next Thursday, June 15, Kohl's is once again offering free rides all day on all routes in promotion of Dump the Pump Day. Kohl's encourages you to leave your car at home and experience public transit on this Dump the Pump Day.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Roseanne Dabbitt?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Roseanne Dabbitt from 2149 Rockwell Avenue in Scranton. This request is made to be incorporated in all areas of Scranton, not just my area of the town. I reside in North Scranton area of the city and have lived in my house since I was very young. I live right across from McLean Park, which is also known as Rockwell Avenue Playground or the park. During my lifetime, I have run across that Rockwell Avenue many times to play at the playground. I've taught my children how to cross that street, I've taught my grandchildren, and I've also crossed many children who had no idea to look up both ways. Just to make sure that they were safe. I've also seen many people almost get hit there, at the Rockwell Avenue and Gilbert Street crossing, because it's basically known as a drag strip. There are stop signs, but they don't look at them. For the past five years, we've had a break in that threat because the bridge was closed. And thank you very much, first of all, I appreciate the fact that the bridge is open again, I'm thrilled for it, but the traffic pattern had changed in those five years. And there's a couple things that happened at that time. The good of it was that the drivers weren't traveling as fast up that road, and the kids could cross more safely. And the noise level was much less. But the bad was that the emergency vehicles could not get to our area as quickly, which thank God has been changed. Winter snow removal was not as adequate as it should have been. And also, the children became much more lax in looking both ways and taking their time to cross the street. Now that the bridge is open again, I really feel we're going to have a problem with that because I've already seen it happening, that a lot of people are just running that stop sign again. In fact, I have two instances where it was kind of funny. A couple weeks ago, my son was at the house, and he's a state trooper, and we were outside next to the house, and a car came raring down it, and he said, "Mom, isn't there still a stop sign there?" And I said, "Yeah, there is, Chris," and he goes, "Oh, my God." Well, just three days ago, I was building a raised garden for my daughter's birthday, and I was by my house, well, I live right on the corner, and one of our neighbors, who was going to make the turn to go up Gilbert Street, came that way, and he was sitting at the stop sign waiting to make the turn, another car comes barreling down, and he yelled at the top of his lung, "There's a stop sign!" Well, the guy didn't care, but it happens all the time. We have so many people that are on that road, that go across there all the time to the playground, we really need to make sure that these people are safe. I'm making this request for all the parks of Scranton, not just for McLean Park. We need to make sure that our kids and our residents are safe, whether they're driving or they're walking, because also, when you go down Gilbert Street, there's no stop sign on Gilbert. So the people that are going down from Gilbert, coming up or down on Rockwell, can get creamed. We've almost been hit ourselves, and we just lived around the corner, but parked next to the house. I've attached a few pictures of signs that could be used to make sure that this doesn't happen, but there are other things that could be done as well. One of the things that I thought might be helpful is a rumble strip across in front of the park, you know, on the street, I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if it's legal. Also, one of those speed indicators that could be used to show what the speed is, and maybe the police could be, it could be put into the police department, and then the police could come up and monitor it. I know they can't put a guy there all the time, I know that. And also, we could also go ahead and install 15 mile an hour zones for every city playground. I know it's expensive to put those new signs up, but I'm sorry. Our kids' safety is much more important. Our residents' safety is much more important. And if we did the signs, we could also do like a reduced speed ahead, and that could help it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Dabbitt, can you leave that information with Ms. Carrera, and then we'll forward that to Director Gallagher, and we'll make sure that that request gets taken care of.
Sure.
Thank you.
Pat Lindowski?
Good evening, thank you very much for hearing me. I live in Southside, 1501 South Irving Avenue. I don't know if you know Southside, but our street is a split street. South Irving Avenue runs here, and I have a small street that runs up, we have like five houses on the street that comes up and then comes back down. Well, the street is falling apart up there, and there is a bank that comes down onto the lower part of South Irving Avenue. I have some pictures here I will give you.
Excuse, I'm sorry, we're up here. No, the other way, facing you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The mic is just a little off-center, we're having a hard time.
Down a little for me?
Yeah, that way we can hear you. Perfect, thank you.
This last winter has been the worst for it, and of course, it was the heavy storm that came, and they had to bring a backhoe in to clean this street because nothing else would fit up there. We had to take all the cars off the street, and they brought a backhoe. Well, it dug right into the macadam, pulled it all, and dropped it across the street with all the snow. So you will see in the pictures, there are holes, and there is a divot in the street that I can stand in. Now, the garbage truck is afraid to come up there because he ends up doing this when he gets to the bottom of the street, as he's going down the hill to come back onto South Irving and Fig Street. The mailman doesn't want to come anymore because all the little pebbles and the little rocks have come up through it, and I've fallen myself three times, but I didn't get hurt, thank goodness. I don't know if anything can be done about this because, as I said, the bank is starting to wear away. You can't cut the grass down there in that part of the bank which overflow, overflows. Now you can't see the cars coming up the street either because the grass is this high. I used to stand on the bank and go over with the weed whacker like this, can't do it anymore because there's no bank to get on. I'm afraid it's going to be a liability soon because somebody's definitely going to get hurt. Either somebody's going to fall there and sue the city, or a car's going to fall off there, down onto the lower road. We have the kids coming from Valley View down that street all schooltime. They're going to get hurt someday with this. The whole bank is full of rock and debris now, because anybody throws anything out a car window, that's where it lands. All of these little rocks and pebbles that have come there, that's where they're gone down into now. So you can't even clean it out or weed whack it because you're picking up rocks and throwing it if you tried to use a weed whacker on it. I've asked numerous times, I've called, they did come out twice and put down like cold patch, I guess you call it, and panked it down, but that only pulls up too.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the road, and it's well beyond cold patch. We sent, we sent South Irving in as a request to have that paved over the last couple months, and Ms. Reed, can we find out if that was added to the pave list?
No, it was taken off again.
And that might be just because of the condition of it, the road might need to be stripped and rebuilt?
Well, I will tell you something. My husband is gone 12 years now, and 12 years ago, they wrote in the middle of the road, "Pave." The city came up, and the gentleman had a white can of paint, and he wrote "Pave" on our end of the street and on the other end of the street. You'll see a picture, the pave is still there, but there's no pave.
Now, you're on the, you're in the 1500 block, right?
Yes, I am, 1501, I'm on the corner.
And the issue is also in the 1400 block as well, I think, right?
It does. The other end of the block, the other end of the 1400 block is just as bad at the end of the block. And I mean, I'm more afraid of somebody getting hurt there than I am anything else because I don't have sidewalks, we don't have sidewalks up there. When I walk out my front steps to go down to the street, I am in the street, and all it is, is rock and holes. And how do I get, how do I get from my house to my car? I can't park up there any longer, it's impossible. If I put my car there, the garbage truck is never getting up there. There's just not room because the bank is gone.
Yeah, I mean, it is, the only street like that I'm aware of in the city that's like that, with the island in the middle, with the grass in the middle, and basically split in two.
Mm-hmm. It's that and the 1400 block.
Right, yeah.
And I just don't know what else to do because there is no way for anybody to get up there. Like I said, when the mailman doesn't want to come, that's pretty bad. When the garbage man don't want to come, that's pretty bad. They're afraid.
Yeah, no, it's treacherous.
Yeah, they both need to be reconstructed and redesigned, there's no doubt about it.
Now, the list that's out there is, that you've seen, that you may have seen, that's a tentative list.
Okay.
That list has not been submitted officially to council yet.
Okay.
So we still have the opportunity to request the administration to work on-
If they would just come up and look at it, I think you would see-
We can do that, yeah.
Yeah, we've all, we've all been, I'm on council four years, Mr. Rogan's on here longer than me, and it's been a problem.
I think if you would come up and see what I'm talking about. Would you want if I would leave my Kindle with her for now so you could take a look at it?
Yes, thank you.
But we will, we will submit it again to the administration.
Yeah, Mrs. Reed, would you also include a city engineer on that, because he might be in the loop on, it hasn't gotten paved because there's maybe reconstruction on the books for it already, but just so we have a heads up and a calendar on the events. Thank you.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz?
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, city resident and taxpayer. For those of you who disgraced yourselves by not attending Swinging on Vine on the last Friday in May, and you know who you are, you can redeem yourselves by coming to the Friends of the Scranton Public Library Book Sale, which is ongoing at Marketplace at Steamtown on the second floor in front of the Crusher Gym. It's going on from now until Sunday. The hours today and tomorrow are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, it's 10 to 5:00, and Sunday, it's 11 to 5:00. And one thing new this time around, we have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of talking books, for those of you who like to put a little cassette or tape in while you're driving, we have, and they're good titles, so come on down. I assume that the Knowles Insurance List is still making its way through the bureaucratic labyrinth to be birthed next week, like April's draft. You have like a video camera? Okay. Do you realize it has been 447 days since the mayor announced the appointment of a third-party administrator for the pension plans on March 18, 2016? What is the status of that RFP? Well, they had one bidder, Access Medical Evaluations out of Michigan.
My understanding is they're going to streamline the RFP a little bit and put it back out to bid, and hopefully they'll get several bidders this time.
We never had the question answered as to how he was advertising it.
No, we didn't.
Okay, because he claimed this would be a nationally recognized administrator. This group that they got was formed in 2005, have a staff of three people, and make revenue, an annual revenue of $119,100. That's not profit, that's revenue. God knows what their costs are.
Well, they're out for now.
Okay. I hope, you know, but 447 days, so does that mean that we're going to have to wait 447 days for the fabled town hall meeting?
Well, that'll be a problem, won't it?
Yeah.
But to go back to the other issue, you know, the third-party administrator has to be in place prior to any trust agreement and pension reforms.
So that thing is, it still made it.
And money put into the pension.
It still made it.
It has to happen.
And let's see, so we're coming out of distressed status in three years, the school district is swirling around the drain, and we're still mated on this, this problem. If I got that right? Okay. Yeah, but the town hall meeting, when and where? I'm ready.
I spoke, I spoke to the mayor, let's see, it's Thursday, I spoke to the mayor on Tuesday. They're still making plans that they can have everyone all together.
I told you, there's a stadium right on Providence Road.
No, it's the participants in the meeting.
The mayor, and city residents and taxpayers, who else needs to come?
The lawyers.
Oh, the 50 lawyers, so that's good.
You have to, you have to have room for 50 lawyers, that's a big table, so.
I'm telling you, this is a stall tactic, plain and simple.
No, I, well, it may be, but the meeting is going to occur within a short, a short time.
Ah-ha, okay.
It is going to occur within a short time.
Speaking of stall tactics, what is the status of your request to the state attorney general to come down here and look at that sewer sale transaction?
It was submitted to them electronically on Monday.
Okay, and you haven't heard, because I remember he made a comment in the newspaper. I haven't seen anything from city council yet.
No, that was, the comment was made probably 9:00 a.m. on Friday. We got out of here at 8:30 on, on Friday. We start our normal business for next week's meeting, the letter was written on Monday and submitted on Monday, so it's in their court now.
Went electronically, you know, electronic comms go at the speed of light, so hopefully he's coming back, I would like to see a story in the Times Tribune.
That's why we made the submission, we would like an answer also.
Get his little heiny down here, tell him we need him. What about the Naog Treehouse, are they still, you know, contemplating their navel on how much that's going to cost?
I wouldn't say they're contemplating their navel, they're assessing the fact if the treehouse is safe, I wouldn't minimize the study that they're doing.
Okay.
There is, that treehouse is used quite a bit, and I agree with the decision to review it properly to make sure that it's not, it's not dangerous.
But it's probably going to be out of play for the rest of the summer, I would imagine.
I would rather have it be safe than hurried up.
Okay. All right, see you next week.
Bill Jackowitz?
Good evening, Scranton City Council Captain, Stenographer Laurie Amel. Good evening to all here. Okay, Joan stole my thunder on the town hall meeting. I still say, and I'll stick to my saying from last week, that the town hall meeting will probably be held after the election. And I'll be surprised if it's held before then, or it might be the week before the election. But I'll be surprised, and if I'm wrong, I'll admit it, I'm wrong. But it's been a week, a week gone by, and no action whatsoever on the town hall meeting.
Well, you were right, Bill, on the sewer authority board voting, so maybe you aren't-
Well, I'm going to be right on the town hall meeting too, because all that's going to happen is the mayor's going to come, he's going to come with a couple, couple of his, his associates, and they're going to sit there, and they're going to stonewall every question that's, that's given to them, and they're not going to give you the answers that you need. If they were going to actually seriously give you the answers, they would have already given you the answers by now, because it's been, what, six months now, seven months now, and they stonewalled you each and every time? Well, they might be able to stonewall city council, but they ain't going to be able to stonewall the residents much longer, because we want answers, and we want answers fast, not months down the road or weeks down the road, we want answers now. And we want, we want serious answers and correct answers. Okay, I understand that the city's going to be in distress for another three years, is that correct?
Yeah, well, that's how the exit plan works, yeah, that's, that's-
You know, that's going to put us over 10,000 days? We're going to be distressed for over 10,000 days, we're coming up on 9,000 right now, add another three years of that, we're going to be distressed for 10, 10,000 days, 28 years. Don't you think enough is enough? Don't you think the citizens have suffered enough? Beginning of the year, everybody was patting everybody on the back saying how we were going to be out of distress city this year. What happened? What fell apart?
Nothing, that's the process, that the state dictates the process of getting out, and that's the process. We have to declare that the next-
Then why was everybody saying we were going to be out of it this year?
I never, I never said that, I'm not sure who said that, Bill.
You know, it was said.
Yeah.
Okay. Stormwater maintenance, what's going on with stormwater maintenance? Are we making any progress with it? Is the administration and city council working on the problem, how we're going to solve it? How we're going to come up with the money to, to solve these, solve this problem and work it out? Are we working on the, are we working on the problem? I guess no answer means no.
There's, there's an analysis being done by Arcadis Engineering, and I think the study's supposed to be done in October or November, from what the administration is saying.
Are we going to have the finances available to pay for it?
I don't know that.
Well, the study's being paid for, the study's paid for already, so.
Pardon me?
The study is already paid for.
Some of it's already paid for.
Yeah, the study already is paid for, yeah.
Right. But I'm talking about the whole co-
Well, that's yet to be seen, we'll have to see what happens.
You know, out of debt, completely out of debt, don't owe anybody any money on stormwater, that's what I'm talking about.
We're going to find out.
Okay, okay, the sale of the sewer authority was a fast money maker. So how much money, how much profit did we make on the sale of the sewer authority? What was the profit to the city of Scranton, because we sold it so fast, because we needed money so desperately, the same reason why we sold the parking lots the way we did, we needed money so desperately? So what's, what's our profit level?
The park, the parking lots were leased, the parking lots were not sold, they were leased.
Well, leased, same thing, sold, leased, well-
It's not, it's not the same thing.
We don't have control over them, we don't have control over them anymore.
One's a sale and one's a lease, it's not the same thing.
We don't have control over them anymore, and they're not paying us for the lease. They paid us some money upfront, and now, now they're not paying us anymore.
No, and when it's, when the lease is concluded, yes, they will.
So it's basically the same thing, it's just a play on words.
You say it's the same thing, but it's not.
It's, it's just a play on words, that's all, is we're not getting no money out of it, we're getting no profit, we're getting no revenue, the taxpayers have to fit the bill for everything.
But we eliminated all the debt for there, and the management issues there.
Like I said before, who created that debt?
The authority did.
And who appointed the authority?
The mayor did.
And he's an elected official, and who approved the appointments of the authority?
Those serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
They're at the pleasure of the mayor, but they also go through city council because you require a resume on each and every appointment that comes through. So if you don't, if, if, if your appointment doesn't mean anything, why do you require a resume?
It's a courtesy.
Oh, okay. Again, it's just nothing but spend, that's all we get.
Ron Elman?
Well, gentlemen, after Marie's impassionate plea for my return a couple weeks ago, I had to leave my deathbed to be here tonight, so please show me some leniency. As far as this sort of fiasco goes, we're never going to get any money back, nothing's going to ever be done about it. It's time just to make plans to go on, if you ask me. The graft and corruption of this administration, after, after two years planning, this is what we got. This, this is shameful, shameful. It's just time to, to replace this administration. Do you realize what Mayor Bill's very first, the first thing he did in office was break a law? The law meant not to hire people outside the city, and nobody objected. He broke this law, and we didn't get somebody good, we got a third-rate person that lied repeatedly about his residency. You know the first thing Mr. Bazzoni did? He asked for a consultant to help him with paving. This city has just gone to pot the last three years with no leadership whatsoever. And it's the people of this fair city that suffer, while, while this administration, they just stand by the sidelines and watch our neighborhoods and our, the city's deteriorated, in my opinion. Let me, a couple months ago, when I was up here and I complained about something, or rather, as usual, a lawyer told me, I have it written down here, I copied it from a piece of paper, he said, "We need a forced," now get this, he used the word "forced," to substantize downtown from the rest of the city. He told me there's less than 500 apartments rented, there's no- There's no income for these people that owe, God knows how much money. I, I looked in the paper from last week, just eight or 10 of them owe $300, $350,000. Where are you going to go with nothing being done about this? This 134 Wyoming, it's in the paper, they owe $77,800. Now, how could that be? Why does it, why is it allowed to go on? This other 245 Wyoming owes $41,900. This little sanctuary downtown that the, they're friends of the mayor's, that's who Bozoni wants to give tax money to, and they're not paying taxes. It doesn't make sense what's going on, and nobody's protesting it, for God's sake. You know, I, I remember a few months ago, there was an article praising Cedar Avenue. They owed like $300, $350,000, eight or 10 developers and realtors. No wonder the street looks so nice. Can you imagine what west side or south side would look like if no one paid taxes? All the houses would be painted and remodeled. But you've got 99% of the city, I guess, subsidizing this little sanctuary area around the mall. It, it's got to stop somehow. Why, why aren't these, I know you guys see that, why aren't these, something done about all these people that owe so much money? You know, there was one guy last year, Scranton, oh, give me a second to find it. Scranton Investors, last, last year's paper, they owed $484,000. And I think it was, that pages and pages with the $6,000, 400, it's not in the paper this year. What happened to that money? Why is it still trying to be collected? What happened to it? What happened to the, Pennswood owed, I think, $53,000 when they folded up. What happened to that tax money? It wasn't paid. They're allowed to, somebody else is allowed to have the building. This, this tax base can't survive like it is. There's just no way. We could keep subsidizing downtown. It, it's, it's nothing but a sanctuary of, of tax cheats. Friends of the mayor, that's all that it is. It's Friends of the Mayor LLC. You, you don't have to pay taxes. You're a developer, you don't have to pay taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Pardon?
Thank you.
Let me just say one thing on another vein.
I'm sorry. You had six minutes. That's more than, more than anyone else gets. Thank you.
Thank you for your leniency here.
Thanks for coming back. Come back again next week.
Sir?
Come back again next week.
Yeah.
Thank you. John Foley?
Gentlemen, you're better guys than I am. You're clearly more, more patient. I have two matters. First, it appears that this obsession with the legal fees is a mass distraction from what you should be looking at. I said initially, and I continue to believe, you should evaluate the legal fees after you totally understand the deal, you have a complete explanation as to what's happened. Now, I've heard a number of people, including newspaper articles, of late trash Tom Cummings. I'm sitting back saying, Dumars 20% of the deal, Scranton's 80. If I look at Tom's fees, and I look at the aggregate of all the lawyers on the Scranton side, I'm saying Dumars got a value. That's simple. Fuse him as a benchmark. I have reviewed the invoices, the second round of invoices. I see an awful lot, but frankly, I'm a bit biased, because I've always believed that professional fees are reasonable and should be paid on time. But if you would like, I would be more than happy, after everything else has been settled, to look at the legal fees. Now, second issue. You attended the sewer authority meeting. I brought up a matter. I sent each one of you a letter today that was addressed to Mr. Wexler. There is a section of the Municipality Act 5612A. And my interpretation of that is that the authority was prohibited from transferring any money to the city of Scranton. I met with Jason Shrive yesterday. I discussed the matter with him. He said that there's probably legal cases out there, but frankly, not being a lawyer, my recommendation is that the attorney general's office needs to look at this. Because if my interpretation is correct, the city has to give the $28 million back, with interest. That puts an enormous hole. The three years to get out of distress status, never, ever going to happen. So I implore you, if you would like, send my letter to the attorney general's office. It's a matter of state law, not any city ordinances. I don't expect you to respond to it. Everything I give to you is for informational purposes. What you so choose to do with it is up to you, but you do have a responsibility. This single issue holds in balance the finances of the city of Scranton. So with that, gentlemen, you have a great evening.
Thank you. Kara Seitzinger?
Good evening, council. Kara Seitzinger, city Scranton resident, member of the Greenridge Neighborhood Association. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite all of you, as well as all city residents, to our Greenridge Neighborhood Meeting on Tuesday, the 12th, at 7:00 PM. We meet at 625 Deacon Street. The purpose of the meeting, a cursory view here, is the preservation of the castle house that has been in the newspaper, and predominantly the sewer authority sale, and the attorney general intervention in the same. We have found in the past year that the neighborhood groups are better united than separated. We exchange information, texts, emails, phone calls. It's been a real blow up in the past year, but it's a benefit to all city residents, so we certainly invite everybody to attend. Mr. Perry, I hope that you had a chance to review the legal bills, and I did a quick review, because I had my daughter's graduation and I'd been ill. A couple of highlights on those legal bills. On 7/22/2015, Loop Capital, the Harvard Club, a dinner for meetings. Planes, automobiles, Uber rides, it goes on and on. On 10/26/2012, Attorney Carl Greco began research on the power to sell sewer authority and all of its assets. It's a long time before most of you gentlemen were here as councilmen. Six hours and $840 that day, and if you look at those bills, in the days following, it was a full-court press effort. On 12/13/15, on Jeff Bellardi's bills, review the outline for memorandum of understanding in parentheses, Carl G. Secret Project. Mr. Bellardi spent two hours on that matter. He also notes on that. He also reviewed an outline from Steve Goldstein, or Goldsmith, I'm sorry, memos from Greco, Stone, and then, and probably sent to me by accident. That takes me to the next issue, which is, again, with Jeff Bellardi. And I don't want to talk too much about this, because the Greenridge, 10/29/15, a phone call with Chris Weslowski about the odor in Greenridge. As we all know, what had happened from that point, the concerning part is that it is not referenced in any sewer authority meeting minutes. There's no resolution, and it's not in any other attorney bills. I'm going to present to you some questions that we have regarding the project that's been ongoing on Glen Street. The Greenridge Neighborhood Association has been inundated with questions regarding this project that has been under construction and the accompanying road closures on Glen, Von Storch, and Albright since December of 2016. Since early about August 2016, there have been rumors circulating that this was to be an alternate Leach H. Storage Pond. As such, we formally requested, we are requesting the council to provide answers to the following questions, so that we can verify the exact nature of the project. Mark Seitzinger, Greenridge Neighborhood's president, did request the information from the city last fall and winter, and has yet to receive any response. And the lack of transparency tends to cause residents to surmise the worst, and we are not indicating that that is what's going on here. I have in my possession the notice of condemnation documents that were prepared and filed by Attorney Carl Greco. With the lack one accountary quarter of deeds on March 15th of 2016, these documents were executed by Gene Barrett on March 10th. And given my brief knowledge of condemnation actions taken on behalf of the city for the flood control project years back, I simply cannot imagine that a project of this magnitude would commence without Don King, city planner, or the city engineer reviewing it. So here are the following questions. What entity is doing this work? What is the scope of work? And will you please provide copies of contracts, change orders, and specs for the work? What city, county, or state officials have reviewed the work, and dates of saying? Is this work impacting progress on the Lace Works factory project that the city has already dedicated money toward? Was council aware that this project was underway when you awarded OECD grant money to the Lace Works project? When did the work commence, and what is the expected end date? Who is paying for this work, and the total amount of expenditures thus far, as well as future expenditures, including upkeep? Any and all documentation relative to this project, including the consent decree, consented decree as referenced here by PAWC, forwarded via email to Mark Seitzinger and posted to the Greenridge Neighborhood page by Mark. The official statement from PAWC, one more second. "The following and following Glen Street is one of a long-term control project required by the consent decree to help control overflows in the combined wastewater system, and includes the planned separation of stormwater and wastewater. Unfortunately, the project has been delayed due to easement," end quote. And I'm only bringing that up, because when I bring it up on Google Maps, Metabrook runs through there. And I understand we still have the money that needs state approval and city approval. So it's a big project, and rather than people continuing to guess, let's just get the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. David Dobson, resident, taxes and fees paid. On that issue that was moved up to seven, like I said last week, please, no vote. We don't need to move the sidewalk. Now, on a sewer authority, one point of curiosity of mine was the $13 million outstanding. And it was a few years back, about two years ago or so. Somebody was all worked up that they got a call from the sewer authority, and they owed $700 in sewer fees for the house, and they had to pay it. And to be quite frank, the person that stated that had a problem buying lottery tickets, as far as I'm concerned, so. I also had an idea on our parking authority with the, so I'm wondering if that's not a outstanding account or something. I mean, $13 million is a lot of money, especially to us. The parking authority with their broken elevators, as you notice, I have a cracked ankle, and I have to hike up and down those steps, so, and pay $7 if I stay for the whole meeting. Luckily, I can catch you on TV later. However, how about free parking until they fix that damn elevator? That would be a great idea. And we had our first sale with the land bank, and I also would wish that people that buy land in the land bank paid their city taxes and fees. A certain name was in the paper for a considerable amount of money. And as I said before, there was $7.5 million owed in back trash fees. Now, if somebody doesn't have the money, we don't want their trash laying around. However, all Mayor Dougherty had to say about it was, "I'll put a lien against them." And no liens were ever put against anybody, that I know of, anyway. And last week, I mentioned about an illegal dump in the DA's office that really didn't seem to be too concerned, because I worked with some of the people that were from that neighborhood, and he was also possibly from somewhere near there. The three dens of inequity were rock and roll bars that used to have a bunch of young people up, and they, mostly local bands, and they were paid quite well. And of course, they fell by the wayside, probably for the DUI laws and stuff, but there were dens of inequity, while a toxic landfill was just budding and growing. I once again mentioned that I would have to abandon my house if they ever uncapped that, and have some guys in spacesuits come in and clean up. I live about five miles away as the crow flies. So getting down to it, once again, I'm seriously opposed to any pay for trash. All I expect for pay to throw is that people that feel they don't have money to throw and pay will deposit on somebody else's back. And by the way, oh, you've got a city inspector up there. Oh, oh, well, you have to get rid of this, Mr. Dobson. Well, here's your citation under the Quality-o-Life ordinance, and, oh, by the way, there's recycling in those bags. You didn't recycle, Mr. Dobson. So what if there's pampers and everything else, and we have no babies in the house, and never did? So what's the answer to all this? Once again, you could write in, "Dobje for dictator." Enough of this dumb old crassy here. And I thought of my new party, a launch for my new party, as I want to get a Death's Head symbol, but wear it upside down, that I'm against holocausts and ethnic cleansing and all of that nasty stuff, so. But don't forget, write in, "Dobje for dictator." Have a good night.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. I notice in the backup, the 3A, we are about a quarter of a million dollars behind on the property taxes, and about $200,000 on the business privilege and mercantile tax. If any of you have any ideas why, we should share them in fifth order. 5B, the, the addition of the Sorenti property, has that been added to the list? And I would like to know how much that has added to our property tax, to our bill for insurance on properties, as we got the decrement for taking off the two library structures? So if you could provide... So if you could provide that next week, that would be helpful. Mr. Evans, is being in Act 47 a requirement to impose the triple LST tax?
As far as I know, yes.
So we get an exit plan that takes us out for three years, and then it drops off the cliff, we drop off the cliff?
Well, that part does, yes.
Yeah.
It reverts back to a single.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Last week also, Mrs. Frannis asked about the refuse fee cost study, and you were going to do some research. Can you share what you would have, with me, what you would have shared with her?
I apologize, I didn't get a chance to find out where we are with that. I know it's ongoing, but I don't know exactly where we are with that.
Who is, who is actually performing the study?
Yeah, I'll find that out for you. The state is actually in charge of that study, so we'll find out who they've assigned to it.
But, I mean, it's getting bad. I did a right to know to come in and review the contract, and it took five days.
And you haven't gotten any?
No, and then I got a contract that was with the last thing on the, for Mrs. Joyce, what's her name, Hatala?
Oh, yeah.
And it was on recycling. It was totally just another.
That's not it, yeah.
Fish, dead fish, yeah. So I would like to know who is actually doing that study and when the contract was issued, myself. Mr. Wexler, when is the next NDC meeting?
There is not one scheduled right now.
When was the last one?
A few months ago. I don't know the exact date.
Are we paying the, or is NDC paying the lease payments for the spaces that we have procured or leased from Steamtown Mall?
I'm not aware.
I mean, it just seems crazy that here we are almost at the first year, and if we're paying the annual, or the monthly fee, and they're not doing, getting any revenue, that doesn't seem too smart. So I'll have more on that whole deal shortly. Mr. Gahn, I noticed the street cleaning. East Mountain is third from the bottom of the list and will not be, the street sweeping will not occur until between the 10th to the 14th of July. Can you tell me what criteria was used to determine that order?
I don't know, but I can find out.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems ludicrous to me that the, it's just common sense that most of the stuff was dumped where it's hilly, and they go on the bottom of the list. I think the last one is the West Mountain. And so we've got all that stuff going into the storm drains, and we're going to pay a price for it. And it's, it's not really necess, it should not have been necessary. What do you expect from the third-party administrator? I know you've put a lot of, did you, first of all, did you, did any of you look at the statement of work for the RFP that was let?
Yeah, and I think we're going to have to change that. My expectations really are to go after the disability pensions and run, and basically be that person on all disability pension issues.
Going forward?
Going forward, yeah. As much as I'd like to go backwards, you know, I don't think that's possible.
Okay. Have you heard, as of a couple of days ago, the law department had not decided whether or not the?
As of today, they will be doing a new RFP.
They are?
Yeah, they will.
They are redoing it?
Yes.
Okay. When do you, when are they estimating that's going to be publicized?
Hopefully soon, because they understand that we will not do, put any money into the pensions until that person is hired and the trust agreement has been set before council.
Well, yeah, I hope it's soon, and I hope they are doing it on ZipRecruiter or some, some other electronic board that might get us.
I agree.
Some good responses, not a single. And then if I may, when, with the paving program, where are these streets that are in there, and how are they going to be, how is that program being financed?
I believe it's through the liquid fuels money, and we have a loan from, a PIB loan from the state.
For the 20, for the 2017?
Mm-hmm.
And where's the list that, where the?
It's within the backup in the legislation. It's a tentative list at this point.
It's in the backup this week?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I'll check it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. Mark Zeitzinger, City of Scranton, President of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association. All five of you gentlemen should have received an email from me regarding 1120 Columbia Street that was brought up by the new owner last week at council. When you get an opportunity, if you haven't driven by the property yet and taken a good look at the property, open your emails and take a look at the pictures, okay? The property is condemned, obviously. It's a wooded siding, wood-sided building with gutters falling off, water damage, an exterior wall that is starting to collapse towards the other property. So to say that we just want the outside cleaned up and the property cleaned up was absolutely false. I spent a lot of time on the phone yesterday with the new owner, have spent time on the phone for the past, I'd say, two weeks or so, on the phone with the new owner, pretty much reiterating to her that it is important for her to allow the city to do an inspection of the property. She is adamant that she doesn't want them to because she doesn't want to pay the fee. It's important, as a condemned property, that the new owner allow them to do the inspection so that she knows exactly what needs to be done to rehabilitate the structure. We want the property rehabilitated. We want a new neighbor in the neighborhood. We want somebody to raise their family there. We're not against that, but we want it done right. We don't want something to just kind of fall by the wayside, and she just wants power this, that. We want the property done right, just like anybody else would in the City of Scranton. So when you get a chance, open up your emails and take a look at those photos. I actually sent them while I was sitting here.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm looking at them right now, Mr. Zeitzinger.
Okay.
And speaking with Mr. Hinton this week.
You're luckier than I did, because he doesn't talk to me.
The property's in appeal right now. That's the process it's in.
Right.
And, you know, it's going to go through appeals, and that's, I think, right now, the best process for it.
Right. And I'm pretty sure, it's my understanding, that the property's under appeal because she doesn't want it demolished. And that's, and again, if the property's going to be rehabilitated, fantastic, we're all for it. But if it's not going to be rehabilitated, it can't stay in the condition that it's in. Now, today, they did cut the grass again, going back to when the grass was cut. DPW never cut the grass at that property, so let's get that clear right now. She did hire somebody to cut the grass at that property. She did have a trapper set traps at that property to where they took a skunk, a feral cat, and a possum from that property. So, I mean, she has done some things, but just cutting the grass and setting some traps isn't going to solve the problems of what the property really is. We're all for the rehabilitation. We support her in that. And we think it'd be great that if she does rehabilitate the structure and move into the neighborhood, we'd welcome, welcome her with open arms. So when you get an opportunity, if you haven't driven by, take a look at those, and you'll see. The other one is Richmond Street, otherwise known as the Castle House. That building was built with the same stone that was built with this building. All that stone is from the West Mountain Quarry. That building is probably the most structurally sound building in the City of Scranton. To tear that down would be a crime. To tear it down, I don't know how the City of Scranton's going to afford to tear it down, because the dumping costs alone are going to be exorbitant. You're probably talking close to $200,000 for demolition of that property. And I don't believe they can use OECD funds. It's not a low to moderate income neighborhood. So where they're going to get that money from? Maybe they'll get it from the store sale, I don't know. But they can't afford to tear that building down. There are people that are interested in that property and purchasing it and rehabilitating it and living there. Maybe the city needs to look at possible eminent domain status on the property and take it over and look to get it into somebody's hands, instead of just putting it on a demolition list and knocking down a structure that's probably one of the properties in the City of Scranton that people identify Scranton with and identify Green Ridge with. To tear that down would be an absolute crime. So that being said, those are my only two things. As my wife said, our meeting is Tuesday night. As I say to everybody, everybody is welcome to come. Seven o'clock at the American Legion Post. We welcome everybody. And if you're free, please come down and see what we have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Paul Casey, Southside Scranton. Hear about South Irving Avenue again. I have pictures, because I'm not confident that any one of you have taken the time to come up and actually see the roads or speak to any of the neighbors about the conditions of the roads. The pictures will show you how bad the erosion is. It will show you how bad the pavement is. It will show you cobblestones exposed in the middle of the road. When was the last time Scranton drove on cobblestones and the 1400 block of South Irving Avenue gets to? There's lifting in the pavement. The road is naturally pitched, but there still is a sudden inch or two difference along a large crack on the 1400 block. Again, there's, there's loose pavement at the end of the 1500 block on the Fig Street side. It makes stopping very difficult in the summer. In the winter, it's terrible because we don't get plowed. The loose pavement leads to falls. It's slippery to walk on. I understand that our mailman doesn't like coming up, our road is so bad. Now, I did see a tentative list of paved streets, and I notice aren't, our streets aren't on it. I noticed the part where it said, "Subject to change." I would like our two blocks to be put on it. All we've really gotten was lip service in an election year. That's all we ever seem to get. Two years ago, we got a little bit of pave, painting. Mrs. Evans, in her campaign, had people paint pave along either intersection of our street. That might have gotten her a couple of votes. It didn't get us paved. I mean, we don't know what else to do. Is it going to take an accident at that street to get some action done? Is it going to take someone to fall and break a hip or worse on that street to get someone to come up and take care of it? So if I can, I'd like to leave you with the pictures. I know Mrs. Lindowski loaned you her. Kindle, these you can keep. I have the circles and the arrows. There's no paragraph on the back, but it shows you how bad our road is until somebody wants to take the time to come up and take a look and speak to the residents.
Thank you. You can leave them with Kathy there. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things today. First, we had a caucus today with the CEO of Smart City Media, and it was, it was a great presentation. I know Councilman Gahan has been working on this for some time, and I was thrilled. I was blown away with the, with the presentation of what's hopefully to come. This is based on 5D, on the agenda tonight, 5D. Basically, what this is, this company operates in 17 different cities, universities, transit systems. There are little kiosks that are set up strategically in high-walk areas throughout the city. And it connects all types of things, entertainment, police, fire, it could even do bus routes. It ties everything together, and it just, it's very communal. And we have on tap right now, what they suggested was about 40 different units spread out through the city, with most of them in the start, starting off downtown, and then 20, or sorry, 200 mobile Wi-Fi boosters. So these will all work off Wi-Fi. Your phone will work off these free Wi-Fi signals, and there'll be an app to join this. I don't want to get too into it, because I know, I'm sure, other councilmen want to talk about this as well, but I was just floored with it. And the best part is the cost. You know, the second best, the second best thing about this is the cost of the city is zero. The best thing about this is there's actually revenue that would come into the city from advertising on these different kiosks. And based on the models they ran in similar cities with similar demographics, they would expect a three-year projection of about $900,000 that would just be free and clear to the city based on these units. So I'm very excited about this and excited to learn more. But I'll let out some other councilmen, get into more details about that. Also on the agenda is 5C, some parking permit changes. I wasn't too sure on the original laws that were written on this, so I made some phone calls, see what the actual amendments were, and they're very minor. Most of it was just drops in fees from $15 to $5. And some other, some other minor changes in the, in the, in the legal writing was just where to place it in the car and what angle of the window, just so we have some kind of a consistency when, when searching for permit parking. So nothing major, and definitely no price increases in there, which I was happy to hear. As far as Rose, your situation, could we also copy Chief Graziano with Mr. Gahan's letter to Director Gallagher? In my, and this is just my opinion, when you have a road closed for five years, we're going to have to reintroduce the normal traffic patterns, and that's just going to take some getting used to. And how many drivers got their license in that area that never had Rockwell Bridge? So there is, we need to, we need to retrain, I guess for lack of a better word, to these traffic patterns. And I'm sure the chief and the city engineer have some ideas as well, how to do this, whether it's a stop sign with a flashing light on it. As you, you know, we could do temporary police presence, but that's only a limited time, and how often is that effective? But we need to educate the drivers on, on how to operate, because it's just been too long. And I think someone on this board actually mentioned that, I don't know if it was you, Councilman Rogan, who said that, you know, that was one of the fears, that once this bridge opened, that's going to open that up again in possible speeders. So, you know, I want to get, like you do, ahead of this before something actually does happen. So thank you, Ms. Reed, for that. Also, could we send a letter out to Mr. Bolzoni surrounding the Sorenti Building, and if there's been any talks or primary discussions on the insurance impact that's going to be to the city? I'm sure he's done forecasting for it, but just, just so we have an idea on some cost on that. And I believe that's it. I don't think I had anything else as of tonight, so that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes. Just one very brief item, and I'll hold my other comments for agenda items. Linda Abley, Director of OECD, asked me to announce that on Monday, June 12th, will be the open period for Scranton's 2018 action plan for CDBG home and ESG funding. Eligible organizations can submit applications beginning Monday on the 12th, and they have to submit it no later than Friday, August 4th, at 3:00 PM. Applications are available at the city's website, www.scrantonpa.gov. And the projected allocations for this grant money for 2018 is $2.2 million for the CDBG allotment, $350,000 for the home program, and $230,000 for the emergency shelter grants. So for all the organizations out there that apply or will consider applying, the project will be, bids will be opened up on Monday, not opened up, the application period opens up on Monday, and it will commence on August 4th. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. I'm going to take a slight detour from my usual format and discuss what could be viewed as maybe a typical week for city councilmen, and I'm sure my colleagues will be familiar with some of the comments that I make. I'm going to discuss both city business and, as well as things that have happened in the community that I had some involvement with in the past week, and some worthy organizations I hope to give a shout out to along the way for the fine work that they do. So I'm going to start with Friday, last Friday. I had an early morning meeting at City Hall to discuss the NRN task force and their Phase II proposal with numerous stakeholders. That process is moving along, and there should be a report on the final recommendations and goals relatively soon. On Friday evening, I spent some time downtown during First Friday. And I will say that downtown was jammed with people, and if you have not had a chance to experience a First Friday, please make the effort to do so. I would like to recognize the hard work of the First Friday Committee and for all that they do for our city. Early Sunday afternoon, I spent several hours in the rain with my wife and other volunteers planting flowers in the large planters through the downtown. This is an annual project by Scranton Tomorrow and the Penn State Extension. This year, the 50,000th flower was planted as part of the program. So I would like to personally thank, again, all the people involved with the project that have been beautifying downtown Scranton for years and years. Early Monday afternoon, I attended the weekly PEL meeting. Among other things, we discussed the Act 47 exit plan. As many you might know, there will be a public meeting in these chambers on June 21st at 6:00 PM. At that time, public comment will be accepted. I plan on attending and offering my comments as well. Later Monday afternoon, along with all the members of City Council, I attended a graffiti work session in the Governor's Room in City work session in the Governor's Room in City Hall. We had over 20 stakeholders there, and the meeting was, I thought, very productive. Some of the outcomes were, one, City Council will be reviewing and adopting a revised graffiti ordinance. The original ordinance from 1996 simply is not as comprehensive as it needs to be for today's world. Number two, Maury Walsh from the Juvenile Probation Office offered to help and will be working with, will be working with her and individuals that need to fulfill community service. And they will be helping us remove and clean up graffiti, specifically downtown and into the neighborhoods. Three, the First Friday Committee and Scranton Tomorrow have committed to include the painting of a new design of the graffiti-covered traffic control box in the 200 block of Wyoming Avenue as part of a mural project that they are currently working on. Four, I have also asked Scranton Tomorrow to do an inventory of graffiti tags in the downtown, and they have agreed to do that. Five, Brian Fallon from City's Parks and Recreation has committed to removing graffiti on parks, buildings within 48 hours after they are tagged. Six, several neighborhood leaders have committed volunteer time to removing graffiti in their neighborhoods. Seven, Chief Graziano committed that his department will continue to be vigilant as it relates to the graffiti issue. And eight, Councilman Gahan brought the idea of an app for reporting graffiti, and that is something that we'll be exploring further prior to our next meeting. So we have a follow-up meeting in a few weeks, and we're going to see where everybody is at that time, and hopefully we'll have made even more progress on that front. Early Wednesday afternoon, I attended a Scranton Tomorrow Economic Task Force meeting, and based on my attendance from past meetings, I am expecting some great things and exciting things from that organization over the next few months, so I'll keep you posted on that. Wednesday evening, on a lighter note, my wife and I had dinner at the Greek Festival at the Greek Church at the corner of Vine Street and North Washington Avenue. So when we arrived about 5:15, we were able to get right into the lower hall and get in line at that point. By the time that we got our food and walked back out, the line was around the block. So I urge anybody that hasn't experienced the Greek Festival and the food to take the time to do it. It's a great atmosphere and a great event for the city. Later Wednesday evening, I went to the marketplace at Steamtown and purchased a bag full of children's books at the Scranton Public Library Book Sale. I plan on donating the books to the Little Library at Connors Park in Southside, so it was an opportunity to help two great organizations at once. And for the record, I did attend Swinging on the Vine last week. Finally, Thursday this morning, I attended a meeting with Council Solicitor Menora and City Solicitor Jessica Boils to discuss an amendment to the rental registration ordinance that we've been working on. It was sort of a misstep, and we're going to take care of that, and the refuse fee related to the 10% discount and a policy issue we're having with the collection of that. So there you have it, somewhat of a typical week for a councilperson, and it doesn't take into account what we all know is the dozens of emails and dozens of phone calls, and our phone calls to the city employees and city leaders to try to get things done during the week. I'm not complaining about it. That's what we signed up for, but I just want to give some perspective to how we can go for a city councilperson. And as I've said many times, and we all have said this, there are many things that are happening outside of this meeting. This is not all the city council does. In fact, most of our work is done outside of this meeting. So with that said, that's my comment for Thursday, June 8, 2017.
Are you tired?
I'm exhausted.
Okay. Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I woke up Friday morning, and I had a bowl of syrup. Oh, should I go through? No. Kidding.
So did I, by the way.
Just a few things. First of all, Solicitor Menora, can you just give us an update? Mr. Evans mentioned the meeting that you had with the administration. A lot of questions about the 10% discount that I brought up last week. Can you just give us an update on where we are with that?
Yes. Councilman Evans and I met with City Solicitor today, and the two issues we were discussing was the 10% discount on the refuse fee and the rental registration. I think there was a pretty bad breakdown of communications. I think our thought going in was that the administration had taken a completely ridiculous position on the matter. And in fact, the amendments that we sent up to them, they were perfectly okay with. And I think we were unaware of some of the administrative problems that they were undergoing. They varied from both of those two issues, but there were administrative problems in terms of the creation of the bills, the collection of fees, and at this point, the returning of fees is, I don't want to say near impossible, but the effort to do so would require an expenditure of time and money and labor that would take up most of the rest of the year in the Treasurer's Office. But they were perfectly, they being, Mr. Beck was there from the Treasurer's Office, and Ms. Boyle, had absolutely no objection to the amendments that we proposed and were perfectly willing to complete those. But they felt it would be administratively next to impossible to make it retroactive to the beginning of this year, but we can make it effective beginning 2018.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The Scranton Parking Authority was brought up tonight. I actually think it would be a good idea if we asked for an update on the transition to NDC and ABM, possibly have a public caucus so that they can give us an update on that whole transition, what capital improvement projects have taken place, will take place. So I will ask that my colleagues to consider setting that up for some time in the future. I have quite a few citizens' requests for this week. The 500 block of Hamm Court, there's an issue with a residence there. Clippings, hedges, and a lot of other stuff is being dumped in the front yard. The neighbors are afraid that it's going to catch fire, so I'd ask that we send something to Licensing and Inspection, and the property is in general disrepair. Neighbors are upset with that. The 800 block of Philo Street, the road is partially washed away down to the bricks, and a sloped wall is starting to crack. We'll ask to send that to the DPW. Also, the 400 block of Oakford Court, we'll ask the DPW to fill potholes in that area. Residents are complaining. There are two one-way signs that need to be replaced at the corner of North Hyde Park Avenue and Pettybone Street in West Scranton. The one-way sign on North Hyde Park and Pettybone is faded out, and there's graffiti on it. And the one-way sign on Pettybone Street and North Hyde Park is also rusted out. We did receive several complaints this week about Olive Street at Mineral Avenue and Barre Court becoming overgrown. It's impeding pedestrian traffic. The overgrowth is actually pushing students out onto the street under the bridge, which is creating a very dangerous situation. So we actually did send that to the DPW and Licensing and Inspections. Several complaints about the 500 block of Burke Street and Manuka, very large potholes that need patching. The 900 and 1,000 blocks of Wintermantle Avenue are becoming very narrow and dangerous, also need work in that area. I did receive an email from the Licensing and Inspections Director, Mr. Hinton, regarding 524 North Rebecca Avenue. He did say that the property is being given priority for demolition, but there are others in worse shape. I would respectfully disagree with that. This house is literally falling down. I just spoke to the neighbor the other day. The back porch has collapsed. The grass is about six feet high. So I would ask again, and I am hopeful that this will be taken down very soon, because it has turned into a public safety hazard. Also, several complaints about streetlights that have been out, one on Fraude Avenue on East Mountain. We reported this as well. We did receive a report on the street lighting improvement project. There have been several outages that have been reported. They continue to be documented, tracked, and fixed as soon as possible, so they're staying up on that. Little Orem Street intersects with Powderly Court off of Main Avenue in West Scranton. That road needs patching, and it also needs consideration to be put on the paving list. Ms. Jeffries, who's in the audience tonight, asked if the brush and overgrowth from Weston Park along Stanley Place could be trimmed back and also be sprayed for poison ivy and oak. Also received some other complaints about the front entrance to the park on Hollister Avenue being overgrown. I believe this was being taken care of this week. Mrs. Reed was in touch with Mr. Fallon on that issue. Also, the two residents who were here tonight in regards to the 1400 block of South Irving Avenue, I would ask my colleagues to strongly consider making an amendment to the paving list here, if that is possible, and giving consideration to put the 1400 block of South Irving Avenue on the list to be paved. Since I've been on council now for nearly four years, this is an issue that continually comes up, and again, this has turned into a public safety issue, so I would ask if that can be taken care of. On the issue of the sewer authority, the mayor announced a few weeks ago that there was going to be a town hall meeting. There's only one problem with that. We do not have a date or a location yet, and this is turning now into, I think, a joke. If you announce that there's going to be a town hall meeting, you should have already prepared a place and a time for that meeting. Again, I have to ask, what is this administration? What is this mayor hiding? The letter was sent, as was mentioned, to the Attorney General by fax and by mail Monday of this week, so I'm hopeful that we will get a response from the Attorney General on that matter. I would like copies of all engagement letters between any law firm or consultant hired in relation to the sewer authority sale to Pennsylvania American Water. I have asked for this previously. I would resubmit this request. I'd like to know who negotiated the terms of their compensation. I'd also like to ask if there was ever any breach of a contract between Pennsylvania American Water and the Scranton Sewer Authority before the vote to dissolve the authority took place back in 2016. Obviously, we still have outstanding questions about the $12 million. Again, I ask why the mayor did not inform this council of the unexpected drop in proceeds. He could have done that in an executive session prior to the vote to dissolve the authority. Again, I've asked all these questions for the last six months. We still have no answers. I'd also ask that we consider, that this council consider, to invite Mr. Gene Barrett, the former Executive Director of the Scranton Sewer Authority, to a public caucus to explain the invoices that he signed off on and answer questions related to the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. And maybe he can shed some light on some of the concerns and some of the questions that we have had for the past several months. We also still have no detailed accounting of what Abrahamson, Conneboy and Abrahamson, Ned Abrahamson was the city's special counsel, what exactly he did for the $200,000 payment that he earned on the sewer authority deal. We have the invoices, but again, there's nothing there. Also, explanation on Mr. Cummings' bills, which was reported on in the media. There are still several invoices that say "detail available upon request," so I would like to request the detail on those invoices. And I would remind people that roughly 81% of the money used to pay all of these attorneys, including Mr. Cummings, who represented Dunmore, comes from the city of Scranton ratepayers. And I'd also like to ask if there was a duplication of services here between all of these lawyers. It seems like a lot of them were doing the same thing. So the bottom line here is, and I hate to keep belaboring the point, but it seems to me, and I'm still reviewing the invoices, that everybody here had their hand in the cookie jar, yet we're still sitting here, six months later, with little to no answers, and a mayor and an administration who promises a town hall meeting, yet still does not produce a meeting date or a meeting place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. One of the events that Mr. Evans missed on Saturday was the Arts on Fire event that was held at the Iron Furnaces in Scranton. You missed a good one there, Wayne. That was very nice. Sorry, he must have taken a rest, I guess. But if you're unaware, the iron furnaces really are the cradle of the Industrial Revolution in our country. It started right here in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and I congratulate the people that are involved in that, keeping that tradition alive and informing the residents of her historical part in our nation's history. This evening, one of the speakers mentioned Dave Bolzoni. One thing that I have no problem about is defending Mr. Bolzoni. Mr. Bolzoni is responsible for, whether you agree with it or disagree with it, a lot of the progress that has happened in the city of Scranton is directly related to Mr. Bolzoni. Mr. Bolzoni was issued a waiver by this council, so there was nothing illegal about Mr. Bolzoni's resident. He was granted a waiver of that. Mr. Bolzoni goes above and beyond the normal role of a city business administrator. As presented tonight, Mr. Bolzoni brought the presentation tonight about cityscape. Mr. Bolzoni also is the one that's working on trying to get a resolution to the emergency situation out on Wyoming Avenue with the young family. I find it very difficult for me to hold my tongue when people accuse Mr. Bolzoni of being a problem with the city. Mr. Bolzoni is not the problem with the city. Mr. Bolzoni is responsible for much of the improved conditions and operations of city hall management, and I think criticism of him is really unfounded. The paving list that came out that we were provided is a tentative list. We have been contacting the administration about including the blocks on South Irving Avenue. We've done it every year. We will increase our efforts again with this. The situation exists, and I think from last year, it costs approximately $27,000 to do a good block, a block that is not in as bad a condition as your blocks are, that's going to need tremendous repair. So I'm actually considering if your blocks don't make it to that paving list, I think we need a special project for that situation back there. I think there may be more engineering involved than really is provided in this ordinance this evening. So we will forward your request again. We'll emphasize it again. All five council people here, I believe, believe that you are correct and believe that you should be taken care of back there. We agree with you 1,000%. The bottom line, though, is the administration makes the list. So besides coming here and pressuring us, I do encourage you to also pressure Mayor Cortwright. Mayor Cortwright, the engineers, and Mr. Gallagher, the DPW Director, have final say on this list. City Council does not. We have input on it. We can make recommendations. We can say how important we believe it is for you, but if you look on the list, the people that are on that list also think their street is the most important thing also. So Mr. Gahan mentions changing the list. The reality is, if we add your two blocks to that list, two other streets are going to come off. We have to find a way to make that possible, to add your streets to that list, and if we add your streets, then someone else will be here from somewhere else. It's very, very difficult to get this paving done. It's our responsibility to do it. We've talked about somehow a list has to be developed that every five years, every street gets paved. We're not there yet, but this is the second year that we're going to do paving. Previous to last year, there was no paving outside of low to moderate income areas. So we are making progress on it, not fast enough for you people, I agree, but we will effort to try to come to some solution for your problem this year. We will try that.
Yeah, and Mr. Wechsl, just from knowing that area, as we all do, it's probably beyond paving at this point. We're probably best waiting to hear from the city engineer on something. It's almost like from a ground-up restructure.
Yeah, what I'm considering is, this evening, we're actually bidding out the engineering services. If we perhaps should just get an idea from them on what your situation is, what has to happen back there in terms of repair, get an idea on how much it's going to cost, and start from that process. I know that's not a good answer. I feel terrible about it. I joked that it was better when we didn't pave any roads, because we just told everybody no. Now we're paving roads, and everybody wants their road paved, and they're right. They should be paved. You pay taxes, you want service. I understand that. So let us try. That's all that I'll, we can.
[inaudible]
Right, it's the 15. Correct, correct. The last thing I have this evening is, I want to send a congratulations and a thank you to Parks Director Fallon. Parks Director Fallon has been up at Robinson Park on East Mountain. He's been cutting some grass. Tomorrow, actually, they are looking for volunteers. They're going to deliver mulch. I believe they're delivering mulch tomorrow, and they're looking for volunteers to help spread the playground mulch at Robinson Park on Saturday. The park gets a lot of use. A lot of different families are up there, and I think this is an opportunity for them to step up and really help us out. Should be an hour or so, and the work will be done. The last thing I have this evening is something that I've been working on council since I got here, is the historical doughboy statue from South Scranton. I have a statement here from the Steamtown historic site. Steamtown National Historic Site invites the public to help kick off its centennial commemoration of America's participation in the First World War by joining us for a Flag Day rededication of Scranton's World War I doughboy statue. The ceremony begins at 6:30 p.m. on Wednesday evening, June 14. The ceremony begins at 6:30 PM on Wednesday evening, June 14, 2017, in the Parks Museum Complex. This is a free evening. We'll conclude with a 7:00 PM showing of a classic World War I feature film in the site's theater. The statue originally dedicated in Scranton's Duffy Park on Harrison Avenue in 1940 by Rabiega Gorgo, veterans of Foreign War Post 3451, was placed in storage due to the construction of the new Harrison Avenue Bridge. The statue in Park honored Lieutenant Colonel Frank Duffy and other Scrantonians who died while serving during World War I. Lieutenant Colonel Duffy worked for the Delaware, Lackawanna, and Western Railroad in Scranton before the war, and undoubtedly walked the DNLW Railroad Complex, which now comprises Steamtown National Historic Site. This is the part that I'm very excited about. With such a powerful connection to the past, Steamtown National Historic Site is honored to partner with VFW Post 3451 in displaying the doughboy statue throughout November 11, 2018, which represents the 100th anniversary of the signing of the armistice that ended hostilities in the war to end all wars. We are very grateful to Steamtown Historic Site for getting Colonel Duffy out of his box. He's been locked up for quite a while. I hate to say prisoner of war, but he's a prisoner of construction, actually. Colonel Duffy will be on display at the Steamtown Site, which does have a lot of traffic annually. While he's down there, efforts will be continued to get Mr. Colonel Duffy repaired and perhaps make a replica statue that can go up into the new Harrison Avenue Duffy Park. Unfortunately, Colonel Duffy has served his time, and he can no longer be outside. So after repair, he will go somewhere permanently inside somewhere, and hopefully we can get a replica to be at Duffy Park. So all the kids, like myself, when I was a youth so many years ago, always thought that Colonel Duffy was our grandfather and served in World War I. So we'd like to bring that tradition back to South Scranton, and I appreciate Steamtown's help and Rabiega Gorgo VFW Post. Thank you. That's a lot for me today. That's too much normally. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept on behalf of the city of Scranton this quitclaim deed conveying title to the city of Scranton, the former CSM Samuel P. Sorente U.S. Army Reserve Center located at 1801 Pine Street, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18510, as more fully described in Exhibit A attached here, too, and made a part hereof.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5B, be introduced into its proper committee. Summum. Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I will be voting no tonight on this legislation for a few different reasons, and I've opposed this from the very beginning, if we go back, I think about a year and a half. We still have not received an analysis on how much it will cost the city to maintain the Sorente Center over the next five to 10 years. I've asked repeatedly, what will the impact of acquiring and maintaining this building and property have on future operating and capital budgets? Has it been determined whether or not the city has the fiscal resources to maintain a building and a property like this? I still have not received the environmental analysis that has apparently been done on this site, ensuring that there is no ground contamination, which we will now be responsible for since we are acquiring the building and the property. If you look through the backup legislation, there are several environmental portions of it, environmental protection provisions. There's asbestos, obviously, in the building. There's notice of presence of lead-based paint, and there's a section in here on post-transfer discovery of contamination. My fear is that this is going to be a money pit. I fully understand the police department's desire to use this as a facility for an emergency center, and I think their efforts are commendable, and I think they're honorable, but I continue to be concerned, as I have for the last year and a half, about the city's ability to maintain a building and a property of this size as we move into the future. I don't believe that this is a wise choice, being that we are a financially distressed city, and we have serious trouble maintaining what we already own. So I don't see an immediate emergency with this property or a need for it at this time, so I will once again be voting no on this legislation. Thank you.
We've discussed this at length. This is, I think, our third vote on legislation regarding the Sorente Building, and I'd just like to reiterate my support for this proposal. One thing Mr. Goine didn't mention is there's a number of pieces of equipment the city owns that are stored at this facility, and Chief Graziano did do an analysis of acquiring this property free of charge or building just a storage shed, a pole barn, to store that equipment. And some of the equipment that particularly the bomb unit has up there, it's pretty amazing. It's very high-tech stuff. Certainly needs to be kept indoors and kept safe. I'd like to commend Chief Graziano for moving forward with this proposal when, in past years, previous chiefs or previous administrators may have chose to build new construction, when in this case, we're actually able to acquire the facility free of charge. And I did speak to many residents in the Hill Section that fully support this proposal as well, because they do want to see, one, they don't want to see the building sit there vacant, which it has for a number of years, and, secondly, an increased police presence in the Hill Section will certainly help the public safety in that area. As I said before, if Chief Graziano believes this is the best way to run the police department and to keep the residents of Scranton safe, I'm fully in support of the proposal.
Yes, on the question, one of the, I know back in the fall, I believe it was, Councilman Rogan, Evans, and myself, we toured the building, and I think we're all in agreeance how the condition of the building, how impressed we were for the age of it and kind of maybe our expectations were low going in, but the building itself is in good shape. And the one question that did arise during that time was ground contaminants. I spent some time today on the phone with the solicitor, going through the back page on this, I think it was subsection 4A and B, in regards to that and our liability, because as you know, the type of title this is, it's almost like an "as-is" title, so we want to be cautious proceeding with this. That said, at the time, in the fall, Chief Graziano had testing done. There was nothing, there was no ground contaminants, but I want to follow up with the chief this week, and I'd just like to know when the tests are done and who performed them, just so we have some kind of backing on it, just to put us, our mind at ease. But yeah, no, I'm definitely for this project. It's a great building in good condition, and it's housing a lot of assets for the city.
I just have one additional comment. On the environmental analysis, I'd be interested to see it, because when we voted on this the last time, I specifically requested to see the report, and we were told that there was one, but I never received an answer. This would be a great project if we weren't a financially distressed city. And again, as I mentioned earlier, I think it's commendable, and I think it's honorable, the idea behind it, but I would only point to our own three-year exit plan. One of the recommendations in this three-year exit plan is for the city to develop a capital improvement financing plan. And part of that, within this, it says that the city should identify the timing of project expenditures and their impact on future operating and capital budgets, evaluate the impact of the projects on the amount and timing of bonds to be issued, debt service requirements, outstanding debt, and debt burden. In developing the capital improvement financing plan, the BA's office shall determine whether the planned financings conform with policy targets related to the magnitude and composition of the city's indebtedness and the fiscal resources of the city to support such indebtedness during this capital improvement financing plan. So again, my fear is that we still haven't seen an analysis on how or what kind of impact acquiring a property of this magnitude will have on future city budgets. How much is it going to cost to maintain this building? How much is it going to cost to heat it? How much is it going to cost to make it ADA accessible? These are all costs that even though we have a grant to fund some of it, eventually in the future, this is going to have a strain in some form or fashion on our budget. Again, look in this building right here. There are a number of capital improvements that need to happen right in city hall. We've been unable to make them, because we don't have any money. So why would we acquire another building? Understand the reason behind it, but again, for a financially distressed city, I think we should proceed with more caution than we have, and especially in this situation.
Well, and just to add to that, the reason we're going to, we're looking to acquire this is because Plan A was way, way, way out of the question. The pole barn was going to cost millions and millions of dollars right off the bat, and it was only a 20-year lifespan of a pole barn. So to go with new construction at millions of dollars with a 20-year lifespan was absolutely not the way to go. So this was definitely more feasible and financially responsible.
On the question, as you know, I was previously very much on the fence on this project, and so much so that I probably would have voted no until I did take the tour. And I have to tell you, I was impressed with the building. The building is much better than I anticipated, and I think the uses are going to be something that I think that we could all be proud of, as far as the police department is concerned. I did recommend previously, and I've discussed this, that the Ast Street Firehouse be sold, and the money from that be put into a special account to offset recurring costs at the Sorente Building for at least the first five to 10 years, until we get a handle on some of the cost up there. I'm not as concerned with the environmental issues. Number one, the lead-based paint issue, every building built before 1978 requires a lead-based paint disclosure. That's all that's happening there. Most of the asbestos, I think, is on the pipes, on the old steam pipes, again, easily removed or encapsulated, so I'm not as concerned about the environmental issues as maybe Councilman Goine is. Not that I want to minimize that, because you never know what you're going to get into, but my experience in old buildings like this is something that can be easily resolved. So again, before, I was not fully endorsing this project, but after taking the time to go in the building and hearing from the chief and other officers what exactly their plans are for the building, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, the reality is, is that right now, we have a cost to protect the equipment that's stored in the Sorente Building. That equipment is going to have a cost associated to it, whether it's at Sorente or wherever it's going to be. So I'm not as concerned about future costs, because the cost exists currently. I think we would be irresponsible to not protect those assets that are in the Sorente Center. Sometimes it's better to worry about the present than the future, and I think our responsibility right now is to protect the equipment that's in that building. I also feel that if we have the opportunity to protect the neighbors that live around that Sorente Center, if the city is able to take over that building, and we've already seen there's some grants available, the city owes those neighbors the opportunity to become an anchor to that neighborhood. If the city does not take advantage of the opportunity to move into that building, that will just become another abandoned building in that area, leading to more blight in that area. So I do appreciate the fact that this building will be an anchor for those neighbors, and I do support this proposal. Fallows in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Summum.
5C for introduction and ordinance amending the administrative code of the city of Scranton, Chapter 439, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 6, Residential Parking Permit Program, by making changes and additions to Sections 439-68, Permit Application, Section 439-69, Responsibility of Permit Holder, Section 439-70, pardon me, Duties of the Administrator, Fee, and Section 439-71, Violations and Penalties, in order to bring the code up to date.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5C, be introduced into its proper committee. Summum.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I have several concerns about this legislation as well, and a few questions. Number one, why in 439-68, Permit Application, Section B? I'd like to know why the motor vehicles registration, operator's license is required to be presented at the time of making application in order to verify the contents thereof at the discretion of the administrator. My specific question to that is, what would trigger this presentment by the person making application, and is this clause too subjective? I don't know, so I'd like to find out. My other concern with this, within the legislation, is that, number one, I think it's going to be a bureaucratic nightmare. It's involved, complicated, and some of it is unnecessary. And I think that this legislation is an additional burden that is going to be put on contractors within the city of Scranton. Even though the fee is only $5, I think that it is ridiculous to continue to make contractors in the city jump through hoops to make a living. For example, if a contractor is working in an area where there is residential permit parking, he not only has to come up to the Licensing and Inspections Department to pull his permit, then he has to now go down to the police department and pull another permit in order to park in front of the house in which he's working on. We continuously drive people out of this city because of things like this, bureaucratic nightmares. This is just another example. Why not include a temporary parking permit to the contractor when he pulls his permit upstairs, free of charge? He's already doing his work in the city. Why should the contractor have to go to the Licensing and Inspections Department on the fourth floor and then travel all the way down to the police department to pull yet another permit and fill out another stupid form? To me, this makes absolutely no sense. Another question I have is, how is this going to be enforced? And my final question is, what happened to common sense? So I have several questions about this legislation. I'm going to be voting no on this tonight, and hopefully, there'll be some kind of amendment made that we can eliminate the $5 fee. Again, I know it's only $5, but it's just the principle, the thing, that someone who's working in the city of Scranton now has to make several trips for no reason. Thank you.
On the question, I think it's, everyone knows that I hate fees. I hate all fees, without exception. But I will, and most of this legislation, by the way, is already existing. The only thing that's jumping out as something new is the contractor permits. I had conversations with Chief Graziano prior to this, and the original intent was to make it a $15 charge, and I said to him, it made no sense to be $15, because you can get a guest permit for $5. So why would you even pay $15 when you can get it for $5? So he agreed to reduce it to $5. I'm not thrilled with it. I agree, the concept of getting something when you get your permit is probably the right thing to do. However, I think it's more of a logistical thing with Lips doing one thing and the police department doing another. So I think, but I think we should discuss this. I think we should have a conversation about this between now and final passage. I'll vote for it, to move it along. One of the other issues that came up was contractors were parking in the permit parking area, and they didn't have a permit, and they were getting ticketed, I think to whatever it is, $20 or $25 fine. So some contractors actually approached me, saying they would prefer this, because for $5, they can avoid a $25 ticket, even though it's a little bit of a hassle. And it's good for 30 days, and a 30-day period. It is a little convoluted, how the, you know, the language, but, and a little complicated, but for contractors, it actually might be a good thing. So I'd be curious to hear from more contractors, to see if they think this is a good idea or not, because it could work in their benefit, especially to contractors that don't have their names all over, you know, the truck, and it's just a white van, and they're parked in front of a house doing some work. They're going to get a ticket, because the people that are doing it, the civilian enforcement people are all over the permit parking areas. For years and years and years, it was never enforced. They're there every single day. So I hate to see them get those kind of tickets as well. But I think we, you know, I think it's all good discussion. I think we should continue to talk about this and see if there's another way to do it, and we'll see where we are by the time we get to third order.
I'd echo much of what my colleagues mentioned. When initially reading this, again, it makes no sense to have a $5 fee. It's not going to bring any meaningful revenue into the city, and if a contractor's already pulling permits, they're already paying the fee. That being said, I did, you know, because Councilman Evans has taken the lead on a number of these nuisance fees, we did have a good conversation today, and I also want to hear from more contractors to see how it affects them. The intent of the legislation, I think, is a good intent, because contractors were receiving tickets when they were doing work in permit parking zones, homes in those zones. I think the solution may be something a little more simple as printing a copy of the permit, putting that in the dash, if that's something that can be done. I don't think there should be an additional fee, but I agree with Councilman Evans. I will vote to introduce this legislation as well, and I am interested in hearing from more contractors, particularly those that do a lot of work in the Hill Section, where there is a lot of permit parking areas.
I also had the same idea, Councilman Rogan, that just perhaps a copy of the permit in the vehicle would suffice. I think it's, that would make it much simpler, and then this seems very complicated to Fallows in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. So moved.
5D for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement by and between the City of Scranton, Pennsylvania, and Smart City Media LLC of 54 West 40th Street, New York, New York, 1-0018, by using its proprietary smart media platform to deliver helpful location-based information.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. This is a project that I've been working on with the city administration, Mr. Bolzoni, now for a few months. I was very pleased with the presentation tonight, and I think that this is going to put Scranton on the map in the area of technology, and really being one of the first smart cities in Pennsylvania. What this does is it enables communities to be better connected. So it will enable our government to better connect with our citizens. The platform that we'll be using will be through information kiosks that create better-connected Scranton, where citizens can easily discover events, programs, deals, and other relevant and important information as they walk down the street. The system also, from a public safety perspective, will allow officials to not only see and assess emergency situations, and we won't really, didn't have enough time to get into that tonight, but it also broadcasts alerts, and it provides mobile updates to residents in targeted locations. I think, and I have thought for the last four years, that we need to change the way that our citizens connect with the City of Scranton. If you look across the United States, other cities are moving very rapidly in the areas of technology. It's been my feeling for quite some time that we can be on, on that side with cutting-edge technology. One of the other things that this program offers is free public Wi-Fi, and I think that is important. If you go to any progressive city up and down the East Coast and across the United States, they have free public Wi-Fi in their downtown. So I think that is very important. So basically, to sum this up, it's a community bulletin board for the City of Scranton. We can model this, and anybody who's interested in looking at other cities who have been successful with it, Kansas City just unveiled their smart city media platform, Washington DC, New York City, and some other larger cities across the United States. I think this program is going to be important to tourists that come into the City of Scranton, to businesses, small businesses, from an economic development standpoint, and to our citizens, again, to be better connected with their government. One of the major pluses to this program is that this project is going to serve as a significant revenue generator, revenue generation opportunity for the City of Scranton. We can generate nearly a million dollars during the term of this project, which is five years. We can then use that money to put back into the neighborhoods and put back into economic development projects throughout the city. So again, I'd like to thank the administration for partnering with me on this project. I'd like to thank my colleagues for being very supportive, and I look forward to getting this project off of the ground and making Scranton a smart city. Thank you.
On the question, and not much more to add, because that was a very in-depth report. And it's nice to have an opportunity to actually be headed the curve for a change, and to be associated with being a smart city is actually a good thing. So it's been a long time since anybody called us a smart city. So I think that's, that's a very positive tag to have on the City of Scranton. So I'm looking forward to it. It's really going to put us in the forefront of technology, and it's really going to be a valuable service for all of our citizens, and enhance the downtown corridor as much as anything we've done. So I'm all for it.
All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5E for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Ruthur Bowen, PC, to provide engineering services for the City of Scranton 2017 roadway improvement project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I would like my colleagues to consider next week, I know this is only on the agenda for two weeks, to see if we can make an amendment to this legislation to add in the 1,400 and 1,500 blocks of South Irving Avenue, so then at least we can get an idea of how much it would cost from an engineering perspective to pave those two blocks. So I will discuss this again this week with my colleagues and our solicitor to see if that is possible, and we'll plan on making the amendment next week after we discuss that. Thank you.
On the question, and it's also possible, too, that if we get a favorable bid, we'll be able to do even more streets. So that's not out of the question. That happened last time. We waited to put the bid out until the fall, and we got a favorable bid, and we were able to add streets to it. So, and I don't think the papers are as busy as they were the last time we made this effort. So that's a real possibility.
And I would just add that I have been up to that area. My uncle lives right on Cherry Street there. And I think this is almost a special exception, because it is a very dangerous situation, especially with the bank, and there really is no street left up there. So I would just add that as a final note. Thank you.
All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title file of the council number 103, 2017, and ordinance authorizing 1R6-I-L horizontal left one-way sign and 1R6-I-R horizontal right one-way sign be installed back-to-back at the Easterly Corner of Vine Street and Monroe Avenue, and the existing "Do Not Enter" sign at the Westerly Corner of Monroe Avenue and Vine Street be plumbed to a vertical position.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 162, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Jim Williams, Doing Business as Jim Williams Surplus, for grass cutting at the Taylor landfill for calendar year 2017, contract to expire November 30, 2017, for a lump sum bid of $8,949.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I did receive a few questions about this legislation this week. I mentioned this last week, but I just want to reiterate, that the city is mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency to provide maintenance to the fence on this property and to also cut the grass at the landfill. The city was assigned permanent maintenance of that site, which actually was an old city landfill, and we, again, are obligated through that settlement agreement with the EPA to award an annual contract to cut the grass at the Taylor landfill. So we're mandated by the EPA. We have no choice but to enter into, into a contract. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 163, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Dunbar's Evergreen Landscaping, Incorporated, for flood project levee cutting of South Scranton Albright Plot and Greenridge Levees for a two-year seasonal period beginning May 15, 2017, through October 31, 2017, and May 15, 2018, through October 31, 2018, for a total bid price of $29,000.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 164, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and the Scranton School District with Joseph M. Alu and Associates to perform the Scranton Single Tax Office Independent Audit for Fiscal Years Ending December 31, 2015, and December 31, 2016.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 159, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to grant a special encroachment permit to Posh at the Scranton Club to operate outdoor seating at 404 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
I make a motion to amend item 7D per the following. Amend Exhibit A, item number four, to allow seating for sixteen by the way of eight two-top tables with seating across from each other and parallel to the curb to provide additional space and eliminate congestion.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second on the question. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved. As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D as amended.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D as amended legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.